Oh, I got the report. I was clicking on the little... The little yellow thing. Yeah, instead of...
Did you find it?
Uh, yes, I did. I was clicking on the little yellow thing instead of the link. Yeah.
Hard public hearings, huh?
The first one lasted three minutes. And the second one lasted six minutes.
Change course and access to courses?
Right now.
Just let me know when you're ready so I can put the body on because we are streaming.
Tiki.
Do you want this?
Hey, we'll send the battery your shirt.
I should write color on. He's thinking spring, Dad. Would you like me to break out into a song?
That's because as soon as I walked in here, they said, "We're streaming."
No, we've been like this the whole time.
Really?
Yeah.
What's wrong with you people?
Don't chit chat.
Yeah, we've just been...
You don't want to chit chat. We've seen each other... Well, we see each other a lot.
What do we have this tonight?
Is he on?
Really?
No. This is my last bet. I have no papers. You can have it when you need it.
When I stopped on and talked to, uh, Big Kelly.
Oh, yeah?
Down...
Now, give us a question. Is he gonna put... Is he gonna go in the building or is he just putting his...
Just put his truck out in front. He's using the building for storage.
Okay.
So he's clearing it out.
Is he going through zoning yet?
Uh, doesn't have to. According to him.
Oh, yeah. Well, according to him, he knows lots of the rules, right?
He said, "His truck is approved by the Ledge Light and that's all he needs."
Uh, not correct.
But he's gonna plant a grass and, uh, paint the building.
Like his new rib guy.
My new rib guy.
When does new rib guy?
I don't... I don't know. What do you think, Steve?
You know, Mike Cherry called me about this.
Yeah. I'm sure he did.
I mean, I'm not for it, but does it have to be... You know, can anybody just...
Park somewhere?
There are hot dogs stand somewhere?
We...
We'll talk. I don't think the volume's on, though.
Yeah.
It is.
But we'll find out. I mean, it's a good thing.
Well, I think it is a good thing.
We've parked that truck there for the past three years.
That's right.
I think it is a good thing if it's done appropriately.
Yeah, and I understand it's awful good stuff.
It's real good.
On corner Route 12 and Long Cove Road.
Do you mean the gas station?
Okay, yes, yes, okay.
And when is it gonna start?
As soon as he's ready. He's there every day working that.
Yes.
I was there today. I took a load of steel out of it myself. They have all kinds of stuff on that building. Old solar machines and coolers. Uh, old gas stations and...
Hendles. Hendles. Okay, Roxanne, I believe we are ready to get started. Um, I have 6:59, so we'll just be ready in one minute. That's... We're... Tonight's meeting is being conducted under Nable Observatory time.
Well, in other words, when did it?
It's... No, it is Nable Observatory time and it is now seven o'clock. So I would like to call this meeting to order. Please join us in pledging allegiance. I'm pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dobravsky? Mr. Eichelberg?
Here.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Here.
Mr. Sons? Mr. Sullivan? Mrs. Wodecki?
Here.
Sits here, re absent.
Thank you. Are there any resident and property owner... Or comments? Any committee, commission, and board reports? Comments of town councilors? Captain Grant?
It is with sadness that I tell you about the death of Bill Haas, a former planner for the town of Ledger. He came to Ledger 25 years ago and he worked for the town as our planner for eleven and a half years. He then left and worked in Westerly, Rhode Island, and upon his death, he was the plant... Head of the Planning Department in Stummington. He was diagnosed with stomach cancer a few years ago. Uh, he was in remission and enjoying, um, a good time. The cancer returned with a vengeance last fall. He put up a good fight. He went through some clinical trials at Dana Fodder in Boston, but they did not provide a solution. He was a caring citizen of Ledger and a great planner. There will be a celebration of his life. The date will be announced.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, I just wanted to add to that. Um, when Bill Haas was the town planner, he wanted to honor Wes, so he applied... He wrote a letter trying to get Wes an award that had to be signed by a town council, which I signed for him. And those beautiful trees that you see out in front of the post office and dime bank were gotten from that grant that was honoring Wes. So now when I drive by them, they're Wes and Bill's trees.
And just recently, really only just a few weeks ago, he did assist us as far as the combining of planning and zoning ordinance. So, um, he was certainly a good public servant. Any other comments of town councilors? None? Review and approval of prior meeting minutes?
I'll move them both together.
Second.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mr... Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Sits in favor, zero opposed.
We have a list of communications and referrals. Council Subcommittee Liaison Courts, Admin?
Uh, the Admin Committee met earlier this evening. Um, we moved forward several ordinances. Um, we appointed or reappointed several people to various committees. Um, those will be coming forward later on in the Town Council agenda. And we also, as part of that, appointed the regular members and two alternate members of the new WPCA. So we're all going to stand and cheer once that happens. And that's pretty much it.
Any questions for Admin? Community Services?
Uh, we still haven't met yet, but we are meeting tomorrow night. We do have a full agenda, so look forward to the next service. Next council meeting for a report.
Finance?
Fires Committee has met twice this last Wednesday. We discussed regular business that will come through the, um, council later in the meeting and a special meeting on Monday. We finalize the recommendation for Ledger for the following fiscal year, which will also come through the council in the general business.
Any questions for Finance? Information Technology? Uh, two items to report. First, we did pass a policy for remote participation. Um, we made one change from the draft policy, and that was Steve had a very good point and mentioned that in order to participate remotely, that we have to be sure that the person's cellphone or whatever device they use can provide consistent and persistent strength... Signal strength. Meaning, we don't want any, "Can you hear me now?" Um, so this...
Driving down through the depths of the town?
That's... That's correct. So this policy has been approved by our committee and moved to Admin. And then Mr. Bruce Edwards came before our committee. He made a proposal, a financial proposal to our committee, actually to the mayor, and it was forwarded to our committee. And we discussed his proposal. Um, as many of you know, Mr. Edwards has worked for the town and has done an enormous amount of volunteer work for us. And so he did have a financial proposal, which would be assisting us with camera equipment, audio visual, improving the quality. And then he offered a lot of good ideas for production ideas, primarily for videos, marketing. Um, and while we wholeheartedly agreed with what he was proposing, unfortunately, it would be a new position and the timing was a little awkward because of the budget. And we didn't feel we would want to, um, request or approve a position or send it off to Finance at this time. However, again, he has been volunteering for us for so long and we certainly do like his work. This proposal was also for the Board of Ed and I'm going to talk to Dr. Gneri about his thoughts on it. But we thought that perhaps that we could consider hiring him in the future for specific, um, projects. Um, so like, again, some of his, um, marketing projects, production projects are great ideas. And we don't want to... I've asked Roxanne to keep this on our agenda because we don't want this to just go away. Because certainly that's the direction we're heading, so it does certainly make sense. And that's all I have to report. Any questions for Information Technology? Land Use Plan... Planning Public Works? Oh, that would be me. Let's see. Um, I guess the... Oh, we did not meet since our last meeting. We did only meet to go over the, um, contract that... The lease that we had a public hearing on this morning, this evening, so... Any questions for Land Use? Board of Ed Liaison, that would also be me.
We could just let you do all the reports, right?
That's right. You could have all phoned in remotely and I could have just... By the way, that would not be allowed. You would... We still require a form if it's a remote, um, a remote call. Um, basically, I would just, uh, report that the Board of Ed has adjusted their budget, um, in regards to that $200,000 and I'm sure that will come up under, um, the budget presentation. So, moving on, report of the mayor.
Chairman Sullivan and I went to the Subbase last week for discussions with some state officials and folks from the Military Affairs Office to talk about the Bouldy Properties, the property on the north side of the Subbase, that the state will be bonding money to grant to us to purchase that property for encroachment and to expand the blast zone for the Subbase. The Bond Commission should... It's on the agenda for the Bond Commission this month. And our planner, Charlie Carno, has been working with the landowner and with the state in order to support the purchase. We do have a, uh, our attorney preparing a tentative sales agreement. Uh, we have to do an appraisal of the property and we'll probably be asking for an environmental survey as well. Tomorrow, I will be going to the Subbase. The governor will be there. There will be a ribbon cutting at the new pier that was constructed using state funds. As you know, the state is investing a significant amount of money in the, uh, Subbase in order to make it more valuable and more brand proof. I forwarded to you a business plan that was developed by Kerma, our insurance carrier, and it's very interesting reading. I... Halfway through, I recognized how I wish the council was there listening to this. They are coming back in probably six months and I've asked that they schedule the time when it comes to the council. In there is detailed over the past five years, all of our claims. And it's very interesting, you have in your mind why you think we... Our insurance is what it is and where you think the claims are. And it's very interesting, uh, where the claims really are and what they're... What they're due to. And as part of that, you know, the questions we were asking were, you know, are we out of the norm for similar towns? And they said, "No, actually, we're doing quite well." And the other thing is, of course, with every type of claim, what are the things that you can do as far as risk management to, you know, to make things... To lessen your impact? I mean, the strangest one was, you know, insist that ladies wear different shoes when it is bad weather. Surprisingly. So it was very interesting. Look at that, uh, the document that was sent. I think you'll find that very interesting. The CBS sale was completed last Friday. The money was deposited, $625,000 deposited and transferred electronically to the town. And a groundbreaking has been scheduled for next Thursday, the 19th, at 10:00 a.m. at the former Gales Ferry property. We've completed interviews for the Highway Superintendent and Zoning Enforcement, Wetlands Enforcement Officer. Uh, we had several fit candidates for both positions and now we're in the process of just making sure we, you know, we... Uh, our offer is properly made and that, you know, the terms of employment are all understood. So we're going through that right now and, uh, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll have people on board for those positions. The specs for emergency dispatch are being prepared. We expect to have those finalized. Public Safety Commission meets next week and we've kind of set that as a deadline, working with Sean McGuckin to finalize the specs so that we can distribute those to interested parties by the end of the month. I sent a request to the Municipal Building Committee to prepare recommendations for siting and design of an alternate... Alternative or alternate police facility. I think it's something we need to start looking at. Today, I pulled out all of the documents, the, uh, the facility study that was performed, the, um, Ledger... The Town Center Committee report. There's little nuggets of information in each of those. Uh, the Chief of Police report didn't really address the facility. I think it's something we need to start moving on, at least to get some ideas as far as, you know, where we would put a, uh, police station, what the cost might be, what the requirements might be. And one other upcoming date on Sunday, April 29th, you should have all been notified at 3:00 p.m. at Pfizer Field, is going to be a ceremony for the renaming of the, uh, Room 214 as the Wes Johnson Memorial. So that is my report.
Any questions for the mayor?
I have just a comment. As an employee of Lawrence Memorial, we are mandated to take these online... I'm gonna call them mini education courses. And one of the courses that we have to take every year is how to prevent slips and falls. So it's obviously a big problem. And one of the things they recommend is, again, correct shoes in bad weather.
Man walking.
And walking around caution cones.
Not a good idea.
Well, as opposed to walking through them.
I thought you meant walking around and going in the space where they were blocking you away from.
They also have a little gizmo. If it's icy, it turns blue and so... But I guess it's a big problem. Slips and falls.
I was shocked. And that is one of our biggest liabilities in terms of disability and working's comp. And, uh...
Any other questions for the mayor? None? All business. I will defer to Chair of Finance.
Make the motion to adopt a proposed fiscal year 2012-2013 budget in the amount of $49,169,552, comprised of a general government budget of $19,624,588 and a Board of Education budget of $29,544,964.
Second. Any discussion? Give them a minute. Kill them ready.
Well, first, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank, uh, my fellow councilor, Finance Committee, for our working sessions, as well as the mayor and Finance Director, Marshall Hancock, for the budget they put together for the town, as well as the Board of Education, Michelle Hiddon, Chair of Finance for Board of Ed, and Dr. Gneri and Bill Merrill, for the budget they put together. Made the process, uh, not onerous. It was a relatively easy process through. Department heads for each of the departments came in and explained their needs and presented a budget. When we finished the working sessions, at that point, we were approximately $400,000 from a zero mil increase for the town. And given that that is less than 1% of the budget, Finance Committee said that we needed to at least take a look at what... What would that mean to not have a tax increase for the town? Does that... Can that be done without hurting the infrastructure, the plans, the education system, et cetera? With that, as part of that working group sessions that we had, we observed, due to mild winter, that there was significant savings in the snow operations budget, well over $100,000. And so, um, Counselor Davis and the Board of Ed Liaison and I met with Dr. Gneri and explained this to him and asked if they had seen similar savings on the Board of Ed side. Uh, he went off with his staff and identified that, yes, in fact, they had had a... The same thing for the mild winter. They had fuel savings and they were able to contribute $200,000 towards the $400,000 that we were short. So Finance Committee went off and looked at the remainder of the fund deficit to get to zero, amounted to about $50,000 moving forward to revenue for the following year for the current year and about $155,000 in cuts in the future, in the next year's budget. So with that, Finance Committee moved forward with a budget that is presented...
With a zero mil increase.
It amounts to a slight decrease in both the Board of Ed and the Town Council budget. $63,000 on the Board of Ed budget, which is about 0.2%, and $53,000... $53,846, which is about 1/4 of the percent for general government plan.
Any questions or comments for Finance Committee?
I have a comment. First off, I want to congratulate the mayor. This was by far one of the best budgets that's ever come to the Town Council since I've sat here. Uh, I thought it was a responsible budget. I am going to support this budget, but I think I would have preferred if we left the mayor's small tax increase in place because I have this fear with all these zeros that we're suddenly gonna have a whoop and a large tax increase. And I think smaller tax increases are a lot easier for people to handle. But I will go along with the majority on this and I will vote for this budget, but with the caution that I just see this somewhere down the road, snowballing into a problem. But I think the mayor did a good job. I think Marshall did a great job. The Board of Education was right there. I think this was a real cooperative effort on this budget, so I will support it.
Snowballing was not a good term to use.
No, I know, but that's what I'm afraid of.
Watch of our savings.
I know, but that's what I mean. That's what I'm afraid of, you know? We get that year that we get a bad year, but...
Any other comments? I would like to also thank the hard work of everyone. And just in case those that are watching wonder how we can so quickly pass a $60 million budget, $50 million budget. Many of the councilors were present at all of the Finance Committee meetings, so we were all participating in part of that. Um, would you also, um, mention for the viewing audience the date of our public hearing?
Oh, yes. The, uh...
Next Thursday, April 19th.
Public hearing will be 19th of April.
At the high school?
At the high school, 7:30 p.m.
Seven, we made it. We changed it to seven. We did change it to seven.
Seven o'clock. 19th of April at seven o'clock. And then the annual town meeting could be May 21st, also at seven o'clock, and adjourned a referendum on May 22nd. It'll be between hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Next Thursday at the Artorin High School, the public hearing.
Thank you. And Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Sits in favor, zero opposed.
At this time, would anybody like to amend the agenda? Consent calendar? Anybody would like to remove any items from the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Roxanne? Call the roll.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Sits in favor, zero opposed.
And Admin, you have some work ahead of you here.
Yes, I do. Move to adopt the proposed amendments to the ordinance creating its fine contribution plan for the town of Ledger as contained in the draft dated February 1, 2012.
Any discussion?
Pension Board's in favor of it.
Okay, that's good.
Pension Board's in favor of it. Um, just let me state very quickly that, um, we had a public hearing on this earlier this evening and the amendment amounts basically to a line that states that the plan supersedes the ordinance. Uh, we wanted to make sure that the employees did not lose anything in their plan as, you know, because of some wording conflict in the ordinance, uh, so we added that line as an amendment.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Sits in favor, zero opposed.
Next item?
Move to set a public hearing date for April 25th, 2012, at 6:45 p.m. to be held in the Council Chambers Annex Building to receive comments and recommendations regarding the proposed amendments to ordinance number 125, an ordinance establishing a pension board for the town of Ledger as contained in the draft dated March 24, 2012.
Second. Moving seconded, any discussion?
That's adding to the fine contribution?
Pardon me?
Is that adding to the fine contribution to their...
Yes.
Yeah, they're in favor of that as well. They're a little happy about this one.
Good. Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Sits in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes. Next item?
I move to appoint Ms. Lori Hedman of 3 Rubin Drive, Ledger, to the Library Commission for a two-year term ending November 7, 2012, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Todd.
Second. Any discussion?
Fine choice.
Fine choice? Call the roll.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Sits in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passed. Next item?
I move to adopt the Fair Housing Resolution for the town of Ledger.
Discussion?
Um, let me just say that I... This is a resolution that effectively states that the town will not discriminate in its housing policies. Um, it makes the town eligible for certain grants that are available. So... And of course, this... This resolution is available online if anyone wants to look at it.
Any questions? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Sits in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item?
Can we get a drum roll on this one? Um, move to appoint to the Water Pollution Control Authority the following members in accordance with the term structures contained in ordinance number 105 adopted on March 28th, 2012. Mr. Terry Jones, Republican, for a term ending April 11, 2014. Mr. James Diaz, Republican, of 45 Bittersweet Drive, Gales Ferry, ending April eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Mike Cherry, Republican, for a term ending April eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Edmund B. Lynch, Democrat, for a term ending April eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Julian Lipinski, Democrat, for a term ending April eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. Mr. Anthony Saccone, Democrat, for a term ending April eleventh, two thousand and fifteen as an alternate member. And Mr. Donald Cameron, Republican, for a term ending April eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, also an alternate member.
Second. Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain from voting on this. I think there were some fine choices made in the membership, but there are some choices that I think have been problems in the past and should not be put on again, so I will not, I will not vote no, but I will not vote yes.
That's, that, like the county knows.
No, you can give five.
You still get five, okay.
If everybody else agrees.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to say, I think this is, you know, for the small amount of time that I've been involved with the WPCA as a member of the council, I think this is going to be a very positive step forward. I know many of the councilors who have been involved with it far longer than I have will be very relieved. I think with respect to what my colleague said, I think we have some fine choices here and I think this is going to be a great WPCA.
Any other discussion, comments, questions, call the roll.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Okay.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Five in favor, one abstention.
Motion carries.
Yes, Sir Chairman, could I just say something? Going through a lot of excellent appointments here, but I just want to call to everyone's attention that we have some less glamorous commission, should we say? That don't, aren't getting...
Really less glamorous?
I didn't say they were as much fun, but, you know, for instance, zoning board of appeals has a problem, I believe Conservation Commission has a problem. Now, I really need folks to step up, you know, these are not difficult and we can certainly provide whatever is necessary to bring you up to speed, but some of these commissions are operating with a very basic staff and a number of members. So again, if you, if you do have the opportunity to, you know, to serve, please get in touch with my office or the council office and we'd be happy to direct you to the right individuals. And, you know, councilors, you know, we all know different people. If you have individuals that are available and maybe you think would be good prospects, you know, every one of us started out as one of those people who just joined this particular commission or committee many, many years ago and now look at us.
Any time commitments on some of these, it's not about two or three hours a month?
Yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me stress to the point that you made, some folks out there might be saying, what do I know about whatever it might be? If you have an interest in the topic, we have, we have great town employees, we have a number of very knowledgeable people in town, you can certainly come up to speed very quickly. If you, if you even have an interest, please come and talk to us, we'd love to go further explore that with you.
Would the county volunteer?
And on that topic, we, I'm not sure that we ever had a recommendation to combine inland wetlands and conservation, and that's something we should look at, and perhaps refer it to Land Juice, because that is another commission, two commissions that could be joined, have similar purposes, and that would make a smaller pool of volunteers necessary. So I believe I can refer that to Land Juice, to myself, and I think we should move forward in that direction, or at least research them, that possibility, so. Do you have other towns? Yes, yes.
I think we're one of the only towns that had four separate missions.
Yeah, we have, so we'll definitely look into that. And let's see, we were voting on...
Nine, we're up to finance.
Oh, we voted on that, we're on finance.
Make a motion to appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars from the Board of Education C N R Fund Six for architectural fees for Ledger Middle School addition and renovation.
Second.
The Board of Ed is requested to spend up to twenty thousand dollars as part of the facility study. There was a proposal put forward and they had conceptual drawings and they are asking to have twenty thousand dollars to pay an architect to present line drawings of what the middle school would look like with addition and renovations that are in the, in the facility study.
Any discussion?
This is one study I'm going to support. The, we have the idea from the big study that we did, that I did in life, that gave us thirty-five thousand, not a whole heck of a lot, but this is the proposal that the Board of Education wants to do for the next school. They're looking at doing an addition at the middle school, moving the sixth grade there, possibly renovating the old section of the school to get rid of the cluster system and closing Ledger Center School. So there's a plan here, the problem is, no one knows the cost. And the big study we had done of all the town facilities came in with a cost of somewhere between nineteen million and twenty-two million dollars, but they used an average of three-hundred, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot, which is not the going rate for construction. So the Board of Education wants to get drawings, they want to know what it's going to cost to build an addition, what it's going to cost to do the reconfiguration of the middle school, and then present it to the Town Council to see if they'll support some, all, none. But at least it's a proposal that will get us somewhere forward in doing the next school project, the school board would like to see that.
I guess I will, I can't, I actually, probably three days ago, if you had asked me, I said I would support this, but the more I thought about it, the more, I don't have a problem supporting it, the study. I have a problem with the process, and that is, to me, it should have gone to the building committee. Because if they develop plans and come up with drawings, that means we're heading down the road of a building project. I'm not, but the project is well above the cost. And my feeling is, if we're heading down the road, which I don't necessarily object to, that's what I'm not objecting to, that the building committee should be in from day one, they should be involved day in and day out. You know, one of their charges is to hire architects, that means they would be out of the loop. So I, I don't, unless somebody can reconfigure this motion, I don't have, I'm not planning on supporting it, unless it's referred to the building committee first.
I'm not going to support it either for the reasons that Chairman Davis just mentioned, and also, twenty thousand dollars, we're not getting a whole lot. The, I showed councilors, our chairman Sullivan, what the cost to build this building based on the construction formula. The costs are fixed, basically, and it's a formula based on how many students you want to house in a building. And if we're housing approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-five students, correct, in the eighth grade? Each student requires something like a hundred-and-forty-five, so a hundred-and-forty-two square feet per student at the cost of a hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents per square foot. Comes up to about six million dollars. And that number's about two years old, so add six percent for an escalation factor, it costs seven million dollars, is what I come up with. So, there's half the study right there, and I did that for nothing. So based on that...
Well, but that's not half the study.
Well, now I'm saying, I'm not going to base our quote on that, but I'm saying it's that simple, that we don't need to spend twenty thousand dollars to come up with that figure.
We need to spend twenty thousand dollars to come up with drawings, though.
Yeah, but when you see the drawings, it's not a forecast, so you're not going to want to spend twenty, well, I'm not going to support this based on those facts.
Anyone else? I was going to say, I, again, I don't have a problem with spending twenty thousand dollars. I, if this said, if this had come from the building committee, I would have no problem with it. I just think, once again, we're missing that step that we always seem to forget about the building committee. We get a proposal for this building for sixty-two thousand dollars to approve it, it never went to the building committee. So this is going to be like my, my flag for the next, or my thing...
This is the mantra.
My mantra is, these things have to go to the building committee.
But if you remember correctly, the school board voted to do this without coming to us and asking if they could even use the money, so they even bypassed that.
So to me, it's just the process, so, you know, I know if you're for it, don't think that I'm not, I have a problem with the process. And, you know, perhaps we table it, I don't know, but everybody should have their say at this point. Oh, yes, go ahead. Oh, Chairman Sullivan asked that his opinion be mentioned in that, now, his opinion is very different from my opinion. His opinion was, he just doesn't think we should be broadening the footprint of the schools with declining enrollment, was that his comment?
Basically, that's what he said in that, and that the study showed that the school was going to cost nineteen million dollars, which Council Marshall proves way, way inflated, but if we're not improving the, we're not increasing the footprint if we're closing a school.
That's correct.
I think the second half is his feeling that he thinks that the school would close on its own with the declining enrollment, not we know if that's valid or not, but that's the second half of it, is that he feels that the school would close, whatever school is going to close anyway, based on declining enrollment. The challenge really is that the board, based on changing requirements, feels like you have a sixth grade in a middle school-like environment where it's single-subject teachers, which is the driver for the move.
Which is the way most of the school is in the area doing.
And why was Ledger Center chosen to be closed?
So the school needed the most work.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, as I mentioned before, I've approached the building committee about a town project, which is the, the police station. And you may remember several years ago, it had to be probably eight or ten years ago, we had, the council got together and acting on their own, put together a priority of projects in the town. And, you know, I'm proud to say that we did that priority, and I think the first three or four projects on that list got done. My concern is that, you know, if you look at it, now I realize we're very open and the Board of Education's good communication with us, but if you look at it, you know, I think the town needs to look at a, at a firehouse. You've got another group that may be doing, I'm sorry.
You said a fire, you said firehuts, we don't need a firehouse, sorry. We did that, that was, we did already.
We have one too many already.
Police station. You didn't say that.
Out loud on the record.
But, you know, you can imagine if you, and then we're talking about a third project, which is Ledger Center and what happens there. Now, even though they may not be related, in a sense they may be, I mean, how do I know that the building committee doesn't say, hey, I have a great location for a police station, it's on the site of the Ledger Center School? And three years from now, you know, if somebody decides, no, we're going to keep that school and we're going to do something else, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea to put, once again, everything on the table. I know there are other projects out there that are, you know, that people think someday may come to fruition. The other thing is, why the building committee, I believe, should be involved in all these projects, besides the fact that that's what we said would happen, is that, you know, you don't know how they may interrelate somehow, and what the requirements would be, and again, the priorities. So, you know, again, I, I think that it's always a good idea to have one group of people looking at all of these projects. You've alluded to the Ledger Center School, and I don't think that's really, you know, I spent some time with Dr. Grineer, and he does have a grand plan, which I think is a good grand plan, but unless it's populated through the building committee, you know, I don't know that it's going to come to pass. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, and from my standpoint, with any projects that I have going on or planning to go on, you know, I think the building committee is the way to go. It's a good committee, fully staffed, some really good people have been through some of these already, so, you know, I think, I would support that idea.
Any other discussion?
In addition to the other, the comments that have already been made, from a process perspective, I haven't seen a report or even a discussion. I can think of off the top of my head, five different potential proposals for how we would accommodate what they need for the sixth grade. Everything from building a new school, which is probably a whole new school, which is likely not feasible, to doing nothing by moving the eighth grade potentially to the high school and moving sixth and seventh into the middle school. There are at least five different proposals which have pros and cons, both financial as well as maybe the reason, reasonableness from the, the teaching environment. I believe that the, recommend that the Board of Ed, with input from the, from a small group of teachers, building committee, as well as town members that are interested, can easily look at the main, the different proposals and come up with the pros and cons, and out of that would come proposals. It appears to me that out of the facility study, there was one direction, one solution, and now we're going to pay money to go build drawings to that one solution, without looking at the other possibilities. There are, there are potential impacts of, an example, you know, we've heard in the last couple of years, North Stonington is reviewed every year, whether they're going to close their high school, or will those children come to our high school? That's certainly a consideration with the one that I presented of moving the eighth grade to the high school. That may not be feasible, and that might be one reason you wouldn't do that, relieve the excess capacity there. So, I, but those things need to be looked at so that everybody understands all the possibilities, as well as the construction issues of having the building committee understand all the needs of the town and have one cohesive plan, priorities by one group. So that is my reasonable process perspective within the decision of how it became the one solution without looking at...
But I don't think it is just one solution, I think if we, if they go to someone and find out, get the drawings done, find out that the school's going to cost ten million dollars, and the council says, we're not going to be repairing it for ten million dollars, then that solution comes off the table anyway. I think without knowing the cost and what would, you know, because the other thing is, is if we decide to do this and they're going to renovate the section for sixth and, or seventh and eighth graders, where are those kids going to go when they're renovated? So there's a lot of things to figure out, but it's, until you know whether, which direction you're going to go, you don't know, and until you know if this is a feasible project...
Well, and I would say that if we only have one option on the table, we haven't looked at all the possibilities, then you start at ground zero again if the council comes back and says no. If you've looked at four or five possibilities and you prioritize them one through five, and the first one is the one they're proposing now, and that gets voted down, they move to the second one. We already, you've already laid out the priority of what they have, and the council then has insight into what the board thinks are the priorities and why they believe the ones your choice is better than the others. Right now, they presented one and just take it or leave it, and I think that there are other alternatives that should be looked at, present to the Town Council what the pros and cons of those alternatives are. And you may come back to the same solution, but then we will know as a council what the other alternatives are, what the Board of Ed and the administration and the teaching environment thinks about those alternatives, and then we can move forward. Without that, we're just sitting on the downshift by single decision.
Is there a timeframe that the board is working under?
Well, there is some, but it's not near, there is a gating event to present it, and then basically, once a year, you go into the state, I don't know what the date of that is, but it's sometime in the summer. So there is a, there is a timeline, but it's not next week.
Okay.
But the way that Dr. Grineer laid out the timeline, it's that once a year, you go to the state for permission to move forward, and in the following year, you go back with the work that you had to go do in that year. So there is, there is a timeline, but it's not near, I think it's in the summer.
Any other discussion?
I think it's clear that we have to do something. These are, these are issues that have to be addressed, just some of the issues that we're looking at, the declining student population, obviously the costs, obviously the change in the way education is done these days. Representative Reynolds made the statement a month or two back that we are simply not going to be doing education in the future the way we've done it in the past, or something to that effect, but we're, we're looking at a very different paradigm, which is going to require some changes. However, this particular, this particular change, I'm not in favor of because I'm not convinced that this is the correct way forward. Again, I agree that we have to do something, but I think this needs some more study, it needs some more discussion, and so I am not in favor of this.
Any other discussion? Because that leaves me in favor, so I'm going to suggest, why don't we just table it and have it go through the process? Is that a motion? All right, I'll make a motion second. Roxanne, call the roll.
Motion to table?
Motion to table.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Now that we tabled it, are we going to request the building committee?
I would think that would be appropriate.
Madam Chairman, would you please do that?
Yes, I will do that, thank you. Next item? I'm, I'm sorry.
Motion reported?
Shouldn't have to, should just do that.
Which person?
To the, to the permanent building committee.
He has the building committee.
Which has four dead reps on it?
That's correct.
Take you back, Nate.
Motion to appropriate FEMA files received for public works portion of reimbursement for truck storm Irene as follows. Fund one, account 1-0300-0111-0104, overtime, amount of $13,595.07. CNR Fund six, account 6-0300-001-009, public works equipment, the amount of $8,319.43. CNR Fund six, account 6-0300-008-0096, dump truck, the amount of $7,554.37. CNR Fund six, account 6-0300-010-0098, small truck, the amount of $4,522.12. CNR Fund six, account 6-0300-012-2001, public works equipment, the amount of $494.30. CNR Fund six, account 6-0300-019-2006, conveyance fees, capital projects, the amount of $8,529.37. Fund nine, account 9-0312-001-0000, tar improved roads upkeep, the amount of $1,968.75. And Fund 15, account 15-0091-001-000, WPCA sewer contingency, the amount of $6,693.37.
Second.
Excellent job.
You did, you did a good job. You read every number, right? Any discussion?
I just want to, Steve Mousen came to the finance committee, the numbers, total aggregate number was what we received from FEMA, how the appropriations were made was based on a percentage of hours used by each of the equipment, and that's how the money was divided up.
That was how the truck mine was divided.
Truck, truck.
The actual overtime is going back to the overtime account. If you remember, we did, we allowed the over expenditure of the overtime, given the public works that are in the fire companies anticipating the FEMA money. This is just the public works FEMA money.
Any questions, discussion? Roxanne, if you call the roll.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Motion passes, on, next item?
Motion to grant a bid waiver to TJ Nelson Home Improvements in the amount of up to $24,500 under bid number 2012-13, truck shelter improvements due to receive a fewer than required in three bids.
Second.
In case of this, or two bids received, one the amount of $48,000, and this one the amount of $22,000, $22,416. TJ Nelson Home Improvements has done work in the area, is known to, the public works director, has a good reputation, and we would like to get, and since there was a significant difference between the costs, that was one of the proposals that brought forward the question.
He also did a lot of investigation because he felt there was such discrepancy between the two bids, but they had had a preliminary cost estimate to what it was going to cost, and the TJ Nelson bid was around that same number, because we expressed concern that they couldn't do it for that money, considering the other bid was twice as high.
Any other discussion? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries, next item?
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign a lease agreement between the town of Ledger and Mr. Walter Major, for purposes of farming a portion of Clark Farm property located 1025 Colonel Ledger Highway and 1087 Colonel Ledger Highway, Route 117, former state property, as contained in the draft dated March 26, 2012.
Second.
This will tidy up, having a lease with Mr. Major who's been farming the land for a very long time. He will be paying us $4,570 per year for the area he's farming, but more importantly, he will be mowing, doing brush removal, removing invasive vines, et cetera, so keeping the property in good condition. And that actually was the more, in my opinion, the more important part of the lease, so any questions?
Are there none, call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrathen?
Yes.
Mrs. Wodecki?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Six in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries?
Motion, Chairman.
I didn't hear that, I did not hear that.
Go ahead, Chair.
No, you did, oh, I may never forgive you for that.
Second.
You know, we're adjourned. Before I push him off the edge.